Okay, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Welcome everyone tonight to our City Council meeting. And I'll call it to order. And we'll have a roll call by our city clerk.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
We're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation tonight by Dr. Charlie Bradshaw from North Coast Church. And if you'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation.
America and for the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Dear God, we do just thank you for the nation that we live in. Thank you for this city of Vista and for the good that is in it. We just thank you for the leaders, both the council and the staff. And we just pray for discernment and judgment for them and the decisions that they make tonight and in the weeks and months ahead. We just pray that you'll give them eyes to see and ears to hear what the needs are and to help them make those right decisions. And tonight particularly, just pray for those in law enforcement and fire that protect us from wrong and from evil. And just ask for your blessing on this council meeting and above all, on this city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, and then we had a closed session. And we're going to have reports taken in our closed session from our city attorney, Darryl Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session on item CS1 this evening. No action was taken and there is nothing to be reported.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda are our presentations. So I'd like to invite Crime and Substance Abuse Prevention Commission Chairperson Tim Lentz and Vice Chair Peggy Revert to join me at the podium. And then I would like to also have my council join us down there for the presentations.
Okay, now can you hear me? I'm sorry. Okay, I got a pretty loud voice anyway. You ready? Our first award is going to be for the Reserve Officer of the Year. And that, this year for 2000, this is for 2012, is Reserve Deputy Ray Tetera. Deputy Ray Tetera is a Reserve Deputy Sheriff with the San Diego Sheriff's Department. He has been a reserve for almost 19 years. In 2012, Deputy Tetera volunteered 669 hours to the Vista Patrol Station. He works just as hard as any sworn deputy on the beat and is well-respected by them. Deputy Tetera does not get compensated for his efforts other than the satisfaction of knowing he is making a difference in his community here in Vista. Thank you.
I'm going to have Assistant Sheriff Patricia Duke and our Commander Tim Curran to come up for the photo op with him. Oh, Captain Rhodey, where's Captain Rhodey? Where's Joe? Where is he? Come on, Joe. We'll get him all. Are y'all in here? See, you're very special. Where is he? Yeah, I didn't have a picture here. Okay, we're good. Congratulations again. Thank you.
Okay, the next award is for the Sworn Officer of the Year, and that goes to Deputy George Kreisler. Deputy Kreisler is assigned to the Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving COPS Unit, where he serves as the unit's Corporal Field Training Officer, a member of the Mobile Field Force Response Unit, a certified bike patrol team member, and a member of the North County Human Trafficking Task Force. Over the course of the past year, Deputy Kreisler has been involved in several high-profile cases relating to prostitution and human trafficking. Most recently, Deputy Kreisler concluded an investigation where the suspects, a married couple, smuggled a 12-year-old girl into the United States from Mexico and subsequently forced her to cook and clean the home while taking care of the suspect's children. Shortly thereafter, the husband began sexually assaulting the victim, and she was later pimped out to older males living in the surrounding neighborhood. Deputy Kreisler was also one of the four task force investigators that initiated and conducted an 18-month-long, multi-jurisdictional investigation in the North County area that resulted in approximately 35 victim juvenile prostitutes being identified and rescued, along with 38 documented gang members, associates arrested, and prosecuted in the federal court on human trafficking charges. In closing, Georgia's hard work, professionalism, and dedication to the Sheriff's Department and the City of Vista community exemplifies his commitment for making the City of Vista a safer and better place to live. And last but not least is our Professional Staff Member of the Year, and that is Andrea Saros. Andrea Saros works as the Office Assistant for the Vista Detective Division. She is extremely ambitious with her daily work assignments and is a key component in the successful operation of the unit. The Detective Division is assigned about 500 cases per month. Andrea reads through each and every one of these cases as each day passes and prepares the cases for the daily detective briefing and to submit to the district attorney's office. Andrea is also instrumental in routing pawn slips, routing courtesy reports, keeping track of time off and training schedules for 15 employees, and assisting with evidence issues that come up daily. She takes great pride in the level of customer service she provides to the citizens that she serves. In summary, Andrea provides outstanding service and dedication to the Vista Detective Division, the Vista Patrol Station, and the City of Vista.
Never know which camera to look at. Okay, we have one more special proclamation here. So I'd like to call up Sergeant Scott Black. Where is, where is Scott? This is special because, actually, I've known Scott since he was in high school and played football for Vista High School. Yeah, a couple of years, a couple of years. It's been a little while, yeah. So, okay, let me read the proclamation here. "Whereas Sergeant Scott Black is being recognized for his commitment to the city and the citizens of Vista while serving at the Vista Sheriff's Station. After graduating from Vista High School, Sergeant Black enrolled in the Sheriff's Department Academy. Upon completing training, Sergeant Black served as a patrol deputy at the Vista Station from March 1990 to November 1993, followed by the Vista Street Gang and Narcotics Team until February 2002, when he left the Vista Station. Sergeant Black returned to the Vista Station in April 2006, first serving as a patrol sergeant and then administrative sergeant. In February 2008, he was assigned as a sergeant to the newly-formed Gang Enforcement Team. Sergeant Black helped define key prevention programs of the Gang Enforcement Team, including implementation of gang resistance education and training, the GREAT program, which has provided important life skills training to over 4,000 elementary and middle school children since the program started in Vista in 2007. Sergeant Black played a key role in the North County Gang Enforcement Collaborative, Edward Byrne Memorial Grant, and the city's California Gang Reduction and Intervention Program grant activities. He's always made himself available to the city and to school personnel to answer questions and to provide training. Whereas the Vista City Council commends Sergeant Black on nearly 19 years of service at the Vista Station and wish him well in his future endeavors, now therefore the mayor and members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 13, 2013," and you can't break any laws or anything tomorrow, no red lights, you can't run red lights, "Sergeant Scott Black Day in the City of Vista." So congratulations. Okay, up here. Go on, Scott. Wait, here. They give you their proclamation. Wait, don't take pictures yet. They'll do this. He has his little proclamation. Hold that like that. Okay, here we go.
Okay, Jerry.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is the Vista Community Clinic Health Food Availability Assessment presentation by CX3 members Enrica Medina and Christina Richards.
Yeah. Hi. Good evening, major jury reader and members of the City Council. We are here on behalf of the Communities of Excellence Project to ask you for your input and commitment of support to our community enhancement project, the Communities of Excellence in Nutrition, Physical Activities, and Obesity Prevention.
Hold on just a second until we get the rooms moving. There's a lot of people here.
So, good evening, I'm major jury and members of the City Council. We are here on behalf of the Communities of Excellence Project to ask you for your input and commitment of support to our community enhancement project. The Communities of Excellence in Nutrition, Physical Activities, and Obesity Prevention, or CX3, is made possible by the County of San Diego's Health and Human Service Agencies and Vista Community Clinic. Behind us is our CX3 team that represent the leaders populares. The CX3 project takes a look at the select of income neighborhoods in San Diego County to measure the nutrition environment and identifies opportunities for improvement. Our project has three tiers. Right now, we are in number three, sharing findings with important stakeholders to show the links between healthy food access and neighborhood walkability. The neighborhood of Ovier was chosen based on the state requirement that 50% of the federal population is below 185% of the federal public level, which is determined by census tract. Then we conducted survey to measure the nutrition environment. We surveyed three fast food, five markets, and as well the walkability to those stores. These are the some areas that we find to be in very condition for accessing healthy foods in our neighborhood. However, we also found graffiti on walls, trash, and narrow sidewalks. We also noticed crackle and even a non-existent sidewalks. And another concern in the intersection in Cannon Street in North Santa Fe is no hair for cars turning left on North Santa Fe coming for Cannon Street. Pedestrians have to deal to vehicles and many times are now seen by the drivers, even they were in the crosswalk. This can be dangerous for pedestrians. Our group took this information and developed goals for a long-term goal. We have been working with engineer Hussam Hassanin from the Traffic Commission to improve the streets and sidewalks in our neighborhood. Hussam has been a great resource and very willing to support our efforts to improve walkability in our community. He spoke to us and about the repair lines, he said can be done easily and he's working on it. About the repair of the sidewalks, it's a long-term goal and they have it in the list. We're happy about that. There's reassessment of the traffic light is going to take in consideration and then then going to be see what can be done. For a short-term goal, we would like to have a community cleanup along North Santa Fe to where we drive. These streets lead to our markets, providing healthy and affordable groceries to the neighborhood. This cleanup will provide a feeling of safety and stimulate business in Vista. We already in contact with Kathy Valdez, who's Assistant City Clerk, and she's very extremely helpful with us. We also like to involve the sheriff department, service organization, the local business, as well any other interested groups. At this time, we would like the council to provide us with the support and identify way to acquire supply for this event. We will also like to ask the council if they can have any input or suggestions. We want to know how we can help you. Maybe we can write letters for support, grant applicants, or we can attend a meeting to planning events. And we would like to thank the council, and we understand that together we can make a difference in our neighborhood. We'll be happy to come back and share our progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll work with, we'll work with you and we'll get back to you on that. Okay. Let's see the, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Coles.
I know that you've worked diligently to try to prepare something that would show your ability to, efforts to try to work with the city to improve some of the walkability in that, in that part of our city. And I, I remember years ago when I was the school superintendent, we had issues with having to reduce busing. And I personally walked the area because we had children having to walk to school there. And, and it, it did have challenges. I know some, much of that has been improved since then. There's been a lot of improvements. And, and I think with your efforts at helping us see these things, that will keep our attention on it. And, and I know that you're committed to trying to develop some workdays that you can solicit volunteers to, to help, much like we've done with Rock in the past, only maybe with some other types of cleanup. So I personally will commit myself to, to help you and look forward to hearing some, some plans that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Rigby.
I also wanted to commend you for taking on this task. And I want to say thank you for not only identifying an issue in the community that needs improvement, but you didn't just say, here's something to do, who's going to do it. You've stepped up to the plate and you're willing to take on this task and you're willing to spearhead it with the, the help of community members. And I applaud you for that and I thank you for that. And I too will support you and do everything I can to help see this get improved. And I'll be out there with whatever supplies you need me to be out there with. So thank you for doing this for the community of Vista. We appreciate it.
So, so we'll look at that and then we'll get back to you on how we can help, how we can help you, okay? Okay. Thank you.
And I know you may have suggestions too, so don't, feel free to let us know what, what we can do.
Okay. Thanks for coming. We appreciate your, your little report you gave us. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. And the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the, the calendar. And those are items C1 through C5. And I don't have any speakers that pulled any of those items, so do I have any that want to be pulled from the council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second? Second, okay. Please cast your ballots, your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda, the first thing is our discussion item. And the first discussion item is our sewer service rates. That would be Robin Putnam and, oh no, I forgot his name. Sanjay, sorry.
Mayor Ritter and members of the council, I'm Robin Putnam, the Sewers Program Director, the city sewer program director, excuse me. And with me this evening is Mr. Sanjay Gower. He is from Raftellus Financial Consultants. I'm going to provide the introduction and conclusion, and he's going to provide an overview of the sewer financial models and he's, and the recommended sewer rates for the upcoming five-year period for both the city and Buena Sanitation District. In January of 2008, the City Council and Buena Sanitation District Board of Directors set sewer rates for a five-year period. The rate setting was a culmination of a lot of public meetings and lots of input because substantial rate increases were recommended at that time. The sewer rate increases that were adopted were less than the recommended increase. The rate setting recommendations in 2007 were based on a rate study that was prepared by Red Oak Consulting. The rate study incorporated a significant amount of capital improvement program, capital improvement projects. Those projects included conservatively high cost estimates because a system-wide assessment of the condition of the sewer pipes had not been completed at that time. In addition, we hadn't done a lot of public bidding on sewer projects and sewer lining projects, and those projects have come in substantially lower in price than was originally anticipated. The rate study also included some capital improvement projects that were identified in the master plan, and some more cost-effective solutions have been identified for some of those projects. So the cost of the overall program has decreased from what we thought it would be in 2008. Further, the rate study assumed that there would be public financing that would be used to fund the backlog of projects that were needed to rehabilitate the system. And the interest rates that would have been associated with that public financing were much higher than the state revolving funds that were obtained to close the financial gap. The financial modeling process for the current rate setting process started two years ago. The intent was to get an early understanding of the financial condition of the sewer funds using new assumptions about capital projects, capital project financing, operating costs, administration costs, and the costs of treatment at the, by Encino Wastewater Authority. The outcome of the initial process supported the rate increases that had occurred in 2008 to 2012 and indicated that the current rates would be adequate to support the projected expenditures for at least a few years. Updated budget data was put into these models for the current fiscal year, and the results of those model runs are going to provide the basis for the, or they provided the basis for the current study and the recommended rates. Mr. Gower is going to review the financial models with us tonight and provide the recommendations based on the modeling efforts. And after his presentation, I'll provide an overview of the upcoming rate setting process.
Thank you, Robin. Honorary Mayor, City Council, staff, citizen of Vista, I'd like to present RFC's study associated with the sewer rate, financial plan and rate update for the City of Vista and Buena Sanitation District. My presentation unfolds the following items, talking about the difference between taxes and fees, what is the financial plan, how do we conduct that in less than one minute, and then get into the details associated with the City of Vista financial plan, the sewer rate updates, and the Buena Sanitation District. It's important to understand the difference between taxes and fees. Sometimes people get confused associated with sewer rates in that they're a tax, they're not. It is actually a service, it's a service that the city provides. In a lot of ways, it's similar to cable or, or cellphone coverage, cellphone. Taxes require two-thirds, two-thirds of the voters to approve, and it can be used for general purpose, and that's the key word, general purpose. There's not a nexus there, a proportionality. Now, a sewer rates, because they're considered a fee, the revenue collected are dedicated for that function only, to, for the operating cost, for the capital. Rates have to be based on the benefit to the user, the proportionality, as I mentioned, and of course requires city council approval. So when developing a financial plan, we look at a couple of components. We look at the revenues that are being generated. We do an audit there, look at the operating revenue, look at non-operating revenue, look at your expenses associated with O&amp;M, we forecast that out based on reasonable estimates. We look at your CIP, how much of your CIP should be debt funded or in this case, SRF loan funded, state revolving loan, how much should be cash funded. We also want to take into account if you have any debt. We also look at your financial policies associated with reserve levels, what are appropriate, and your coverage ratio. Based on all that information, we develop a 10-year financial plan, or in this case, a five-year financial plan. For the City of Vista, what we did is we look at your revenues, basically in fiscal year 13, this fiscal year, you're, we're anticipating to generate $18.5 million. Other revenues coming in, these are miscellaneous revenues, is almost a million dollars. The O&amp;M expenditure is $9.4 million, and the CIP for this fiscal year is $11.2. As Robin mentioned, the city is engaging in getting great loans from the state revolving, SRF loan, at a very modest interest rate, almost nothing. Basically, we're borrowing $11.2 million this fiscal year and the next fiscal year we're borrowing $22 million. Now, I'd like to show you snapshots of the financial model that we've developed and provided to the city. This is the first one, it shows basically the coverage ratio. Basically, what we need to do is we need to make sure you can pay the debt plus something else. The key thing here is, is that the green line is above the red line. So as you can see in the forecast here to 2023, things are looking great, you're meeting your coverage ratio requirement. The next one shows us our operating position. Are we meeting our operating costs? The bars, the blue, is the operating cost, the purple is the proposed debt service associated with the SRF loan, and then the orange second is the revenues getting generated to fund the CIP. And then the orange second is the revenues being generated to fund the CIP. As you can see here, and then the green line is your revenues. As you can see right now, we're meeting our operating position in the sense that we're meeting our operating costs associated with Vista. Now, more of the challenge comes with the CIP. As you can see, here's the CIP schedule, basically the total amount of money that we're going to be spending each year. It also shows the mix of how much is cash and debt funded. Cash is what we call PGO, that's the green section. The purple section is that SRF loan that I just mentioned, about $11 million in fiscal year 13 and 14. And what you'll see next is basically our ending fund balance. This is basically our checking account for this enterprise or for the sewer. Basically, the green line is the target reserves. The bars are ending fund balance. And as you can see, in fiscal year '22 and '23, we have some challenges there in the outlying years where we're not meeting our reserve targets. And that's a concern of ours. We want to make sure we have slight rate increases, if needed, throughout the next 10 years, not one big rate increase in year seven or eight, or something uncontrollable that we have in the past. So given that objective, what our recommendation is, is that the next two years have no rate increase. And then the following three years do a rate increase based on CPI, whatever that is. Historically, it's been around 3%. So in our modeling, we assume it's 3%. And then roughly, the projections out in the next five years, following that five-year increment from fiscal year 19 to '23 is another 3%. So the next charts show us this update. Those bars are the 3% that I mentioned. So again, as I mentioned, fiscal years '16, '17, and '18 will be based on CPI. We don't know what that is, of course, but we're assuming or based on historical 30-year average is 3%. So that's our take right now. So if it's 3%, what will happen with our financial plan? Here's the operating position now. We have two lines now. You see a red line and a green line. The red line is the revenue under the current rate. The green line is with that 3% increase. This is a CIP, is similar to the last one I showed you. Nothing changed here. And this is where you'll see the change, is the ending fund balance. We're in the outlying years. Now we're meeting our reserve targets. Things are looking good. We have a slight modest increase out in the following years. So we maintain the health of this enterprise. We're not doing anything substantial, significant rate increase or anything like that. Next, and this is basically the proposed rate adjustments. As you can see in '16, '17, and '18, once we know what that CPI is or what we anticipate, then we can do the rate increase associated with it. With Buena Sanitation, we basically looked at the same kind of analysis. We looked at the revenues that are coming in, $8.3 million. Other revenues, $62,000. The O&amp;M is $3.1 million. And the CIP in this fiscal year is $9.8. There's no debt associated with Buena, or we are not suggesting you to issue any debt. So then this chart, as you can see, is very blank. There's nothing here. And actually, the status quo and the proposed are the same in this scenario in the sense that we're not actually recommending any rate increase. And you'll soon see why. Here's the operating position associated with Buena. Again, the blue bar, the blue section is the O&amp;M expense. The green line is the revenue being generated with the current rate. And the orange section is revenues that's being put in to fund the CIP. This chart right over here shows the CIP expenditure. There are some significant CIP that is happening in Buena Sanitation District in fiscal year 13 and 14, as you can see in the big blue in the green section. Fiscal year '21, '22, and '23, basically that's a pump station that's going to be replaced and that we're anticipating will occur. And here's basically the fund balance associated with this. As you can see, the green line, we're meeting or exceeding the green line in most of the years. In the outlying years, as you can see, we're getting closer towards that green line, given that pump station replacement. There's some uncertainty about that pump station replacement. It might happen sooner, it might happen later. Typically with these studies, what we recommend you do is do five years of rate adoption, which is what you're doing or will be planning to do, and then do another rate study for the next five years. Here's the rate adjustments associated with Buena, basically no changes in the rates. And is there any questions I may answer?
Okay, anybody have any questions? I have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker? It'll be Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. A question, if I might. How long ago was the Red Oak analysis done?
It was done in 2007.
Okay, so we're talking six, seven years ago. The Red Oak was based on a average 10% a year increase at cost at the Encina plant and a 5% a year increase, operating increase, at the Vista sanitation. I just want to, I have trouble with basing the rates on dwelling units as opposed to how much water you use. Years ago, I put in easy turf in my backyard. And when I do water, I use a hose. I don't use sprinklers. At some point in time, I'd like somebody to think about having two charges on the bill, one for the fixed charge, whatever they are, and the other one based on usage. All your other utilities base things on usage, electricity, water, you name it. And it's not rocket science to get an off-the-shelf billing program that would take the VID data and make some sense out of it. As it is, old people like me, who don't use much water, are subsidizing those that do. With that, think about it, please. Thank you.
I pay the same, I do the same thing you do. I'm all by myself and I have easy turf also. I just know that other cities that do that are actually, they have their water district as well as, and we don't have that. We have, this irrigation district is a separate entity. So, anybody have anything down at the council? Robin, I think is going to go through the public hearing process. Are you going to do that?
I'd like to go ahead and review the fact that what staff is recommending tonight is the council approve the financial plans and the recommended sewer rates. The reason we're asking you to take this action is so that we can go ahead and prepare public hearing notices and publish them so that we can hold a public hearing on proposed rates. We can be really specific in our public hearing notices, in other words. The public hearing to formally consider sewer rates is tentatively scheduled for April 23rd. And that concludes our presentation, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Councilmember Regulera?
I think I spoke to you about this earlier, but I still have a concern about that chart number four. Where Fund 504 and 506 start to descend quickly. And I know, you know, that's way out there and there's probably a lot of changes. Does it make sense to try to level that out at least a little bit or at least slow that down?
The reason why that's declining significantly is because of the CIP in 2021, '22, and '23. It's a direct correlation with that. And there's some uncertainty about that. We know we're going to have to replace this pump station. We don't know exactly when. I mean, it's far out. We want to take that into account in our financial plan.
So are you, well, are you saying that basically this CIP spending is what's bringing it down proportionately?
Correct.
So if we were to look out two, three, or four more years out, all hypothetical at this point, would it be level?
It could be level. I mean...
I mean, is that what you feel?
If you look at the 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, those represent kind of a steady state in what we anticipate our CIP funding to be. The bars get bigger because of the pump station. But in 2024, we'd expect them to be back at that lower 2017 level.
Okay. And I think in five years, we'll be able to revisit that. Maybe we'll have a better estimate on when that pump station will need to be replaced.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, I need a motion to set the public hearing and...
I'll make a motion.
Adopt the resolution and adopt both resolutions for Buena and Vista?
Second?
Do you have to close a public hearing, though?
Is this a public hearing? This is a discussion item.
Discussion, yeah.
Right now...
You're setting a public hearing.
Yeah, okay. So I'll make that motion to set the public hearing to consider the proposed rates for the Buena Sanitation and Vista Sewer.
Second?
Okay, so please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So we'll have our public hearing set for April 23rd. The next thing on our agenda is our fiscal year 2012-13 second quarter financial report. And that will be Dale Nielsen.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the city of Vista. Before you tonight, I'm presenting to you the second quarter financial report for the six months ended December 31st, 2012. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expenditures are within budgetary expectations with no unusual items noted. Exhibit three, starting on page nine, provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of December 31st. As of December 31st, the general fund has received 38.2% of its total budgeted resources. The first half of the fiscal year is generally lighter revenue-wise because the city gets a substantial amount of revenue in the second half of the year. Some of these larger items include the VLF property tax compensation and our sales tax triple flip payment. Those two items alone amount to nearly $10 million. A number of revenue items that we receive in July also get accrued back to the prior fiscal year, also causing the first half of the year to appear to be light. Exhibit four on pages 13 and 14, the graphs included in the staff report, show at this point that sales tax revenues are approximately 6% ahead of budgetary expectations at this time. And property tax revenues appear to be right on target. We have noted some improvements this year in property assessed valuations, so hopefully that will continue on. Things I read in the news seems that housing is starting to turn over a little bit more and that we're getting some better recovery in that area. Exhibit five on page 15 presents similar information for the expenditure side of the general fund. At this point, expenditures are at 39.8% of the total appropriated amounts allotted for the year. There are a number of recommended budget changes at this time. Detailed discussion on those changes can be found on exhibit two, which is on page eight of the report. The resolutions to adjust the operating and CIP budgets for the city can be found on exhibits nine and 10. If there's any questions the council may have, I would be more than happy to try and answer them.
Am I on? Okay. Okay, we have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first? Okay, Chuck Rabel.
Yes, it's me again. Looks to me like we're doing okay. The biggest question I have is the money for the, it's going to get reprogrammed, for the city preschool program. I have no idea why the city needs to be in a preschool program. There are a number of nonprofits and for-profits throughout town that that's their business. They're probably better at it than the city is. And I don't, for the life of me, can't understand why we break 250 chairs a year at the moonlight or why we're in the preschool business. And going forward with this year's, this coming budget cycle, please give some thought to making the moonlight just like we have the wave in entrepreneurial accounting or whatever it's called. Because we're subsidizing too many things or the city's using our tax money to buy votes. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Any councilmembers? If not, this is just a received, do I need a motion for this, too? A motion, well, I guess a motion to receive the report and adopt the city council resolution amending the operating program budget and the capital improvement budget. I need a motion, anybody?
Madam mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion in a second, okay. Did everyone cast their votes? Okay, that motion passes unanimously also. The next thing on our agenda is our public hearing, public hearing number one. And this is the disposition and development affordable housing agreement with Affirmed Housing Group. And we'll open the public hearing. And John Meyer will give a presentation here.
Mayor and members of the city council, my name is John Meyer and I'm the Housing and Redevelopment Director. With me tonight are Mark Hipsh, our Affordable Housing Attorney, and Rena Shaw of KMA Associates, our fiscal consultant. For your consideration tonight is a disposition and development agreement with Affirmed Housing Group to develop the 69-unit Paseo Point mixed-use development. The project is located along South Santa Fe Avenue, generally between Main Street and Ocean View Drive. The development is three stories of residential units over first-floor commercial leasing offices and resident services. The developer will also be improving and maintaining the linear park along South Santa Fe. The development contains studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units. The units will have restricted rents for 55 years. And the rents will range from just under $400 a month to just over $1,100 a month. The residents will have to meet income eligibility requirements. These residents will likely include many existing members of our community who teach our kids, deliver our mail, and work in the business park. Over the past several months, the staff has been working with Affirmed Housing to put this affordable housing deal together. As outlined in the staff report, the main source of funding to build the project includes 9% tax credits, a financial contribution from the commission, a permanent loan, and a land value of the commission's property. The financial contribution from the commission is $3.25 million and offsets certain costs borne by the developer unique to this project. These includes the acquisition of one remaining property, the demolition of the existing improvements, the remediation of contaminated soil, the enhanced off-site improvements associated with the Paseo Santa Fe streetscape, and the development of the park site. The developer will be applying for 9% tax credits this March and should hear in early summer if they have been awarded the tax credits. This process is very competitive and may take several rounds before credits are awarded. If successful on its first application, Affirmed Housing should be under construction this time next year. The commission will lease the site to the developer. And at the end of the lease term, the property and improvements will revert to the commission. We are very excited about this project. We are very excited the impact this project will have on the revitalization of Paseo Santa Fe and believe it's a great example of how affordable housing dollars can leverage neighborhood revitalization. If everything proceeds as we hope, in about two years, we'll have eradicated the blight, provided affordable housing, showcased the streetscape improvements, and created a linear park. This project will be heard by the Planning Commission at its February 19th meeting. That concludes our presentation. Representatives from Affirmed Housing are in attendance tonight, and any of us are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so do I have any questions from my council? We've kind of read through this and lived with it for a while here. So do you have any questions down there now? any questions down there now? Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. Just—I guess just for clarification, I know we keep referring to this project as affordable housing. It is truly a low-income housing, right? I mean—
Yes. Per redevelopment law, the units have to be restricted to income levels, and those are often expressed as extremely low, very low, and lower income. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, if I don't have any other comments, then we need to close the public hearing and move to staff recommendation.
I make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the recommendation.
Okay, do I have a second from somebody? Anybody? Amanda or Councilmember Rigby? Okay, please cast your ballots or your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously also. So with that, we are at oral communications, and I have a couple here. The first speakers will be—I have Ron Jenkins and Camina Jensen.
First of all, good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I appreciate you letting us have these few minutes. My name is Ron Jenkins. I am the Regional Director for Family Dollar, and as you all know, we have recently just opened up a unit about a half mile from here, and there's been a little bit of a confusion in which how we should be labeled and regarded as what type of business. So hopefully what we can do in our time is we have some passouts here, which are a little bit dated, but the material's pretty much the same, and there's plenty of copies there for everybody. So just taking a few minutes, let us know what Family Dollar really has been a business about 55 years now, a Fortune 300 company, and what we typically do is take—I like to word it as—take the big-box mentality and offer that to the consumer in a smaller, more convenient box. So we offer anything from our, you know, our food items to our, you know, motor oil—you can get, you know, home decor there, decorative sheet sets, comforter sets, you know, so it really is a little bit of everything, kind of squeezed into one box, you know, so we have a lot to offer the community. We have just embarked into California roughly a little over a year ago. We're at 60 stores right now, and see California has a huge growth potential for the company as well as what we have to offer in California. So there's about 10 copies there. Like I said, this is all due to data. I do apologize, I asked for some updated stuff, and it's probably going to be there shortly after I left this afternoon. So, you know, what do we bring? Again, we are just over 9,000 stores, or just under 9,000 stores strong right now after the 55 years, continuously do grow on a regular basis, so we are hoping to continue that growth through Vista. One of the things that we like to say that we offer basically when it comes to getting a value on everyday items, regular items, that the entire family can use, this is an easy one-stop location, and Family Dollar is the best stop for that convenience and the selection of goods. And then I'd also like to offer up any time that's available left from our hand, if there's any questions that you all may have to help clarify some of the confusion and so forth. It's what type of retailer that we really are and what we do, and I know that most everybody, I think, has been to the location, visited it, and would like to offer my time for any questions that you all may have in regards to our business.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay, no questions, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Moffett.
I hope I can finish this in three minutes. My name's John Moffett. I've been a resident of Vista for the last 10 years. I live just about a half a mile down the road here. My—I had an aunt that lived here when I went to boot camp in 1961, but I grew up in Northern California. The reason I'm here today is because—I well, some of you know—I mean, some of you have read my complaints and my whining about things that have been going on, but I don't really want to go into all those details at this point. I would be glad to talk to anybody, any of you privately if you would like, because there's just too much stuff that isn't really relevant anymore. There's a new council, there's a new city manager. Sorry, I should have addressed you first, Mayor, and honorable council members.
That's fine.
And the reason I'm here—I just paid the bills for the month of February for Vista Townsite Community Partnership. I'm the Board Treasurer, and we have $25 left in our checking account. I plan on buying my computer array that I've been using for four years, starting at the Vista Townsite facility, and then we moved it to be BBBA for a while, and we were housed there free of rent, but we were supposed to be able to not have to pay anything but $40 a month over at BTCP—or at the Townsite facility, but that was because Bill Rawlings was the president of the board, the chair of the board, and when he left, he made some changes, and it was taken over by the Economic Development Director and they appointed an assistant to the board, which turned out to be more of an executioner than an executive-assistant. But anyway, we're basically broke. I plan to buy my computer array. Did I mention that? I'm going to—because it'll take about $600 to pay for the March, and then I will give a notice unless somebody wants to help. We have about—we've only got about—we haven't had any money to advertise. We've made about—we have about 10 students that use it regularly now. Some of them just started coming in the last few weeks because we haven't been able to advertise or let anybody know. We have no money. In fact, the girl that was our Director of Operations that left a couple of months ago because we didn't have enough money to pay her anymore, she was keeping leaving the lights off during the day so we could keep the computers on. We have about 15 computer stations, including three for staff, but we have no staff. We have all of the people that were selected and have recommended for the board, most of them turned out to be non-citizens that had no documentation, and when things started to get messy, they all took off, and they're not technically available anymore. And so it's been kind of a mess, but we've got—we had about three homeless people that were using the computer system to access their resources before the shelters opened, and they haven't been back since the shelters opened. But it was just starting to get off the ground a little bit. I've been putting in—I've been going Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from roughly 3:00 until 9:00 or 10:00.
Why don't you wrap up your—yeah, your red lights on. Okay.
Yeah, I've been putting in about 30 hours, and I could put in more. It's my retirement job. I city-turned 50 last month, and I turned—eight days later, I turned 70, and I—but I'm healthy enough, as long as I'm sitting down, that I could do—I can sit and monitor a study hall for 40 hours a week easily, but we need help, and there's nothing—I'm either going to have to close it down, and we need help—we need somebody to give our stuff to. I don't want to give—I—we've got, as I say, about 15 computers, two of them need service, but we need—I need suggestions for who to give it to. That's how we have to fold it up, and I want to fold it up. My name's on the license now, and I don't want to have it sitting around being used for illicit purposes by anybody, and it doesn't—and I know that it has nothing to do with—I have a different attitude towards politicians than a lot of people do. They read the newspaper, but as a retired federal employee, I know that most of the things that go wrong with governance in our country have to do with the bureaucracy rather than the politicians, who are vetted very carefully and looked at very—as closely as they can. So I have a slightly different worldview, but anyhow, I'm sorry to take so much time.
Thanks, John.
And if—you know how to get ahold of me, and we will be open for the rest of this month and March.
Okay.
But I'm going to—I'm going to ask our landlord to give us—if we get the money somehow—to pay the rent, to let us go—continue to go on a month-to-month basis, but I'd really appreciate some help if the council—we—you paid us $40,000 net to do Vista and Rock two years ago. We could exist for up to four—about four years on that now.
But we don't do—we aren't doing this.
I know, we don't do it anymore, but I mean, that's—there were service contracts that we were involved in and that we did for you, and that was—
Maybe through the churches, maybe you could donate to your—the church—one of the churches or something, that would be—
That's what I've been thinking. I just—I just thought I'd let you make suggestions if you want.
Okay. Councilman Aguilera has something?
Yeah, no, I mean, I definitely feel for your situation. I know you're trying to do a good thing for our community, and I appreciate that, and I think all the council members here appreciate your efforts. I think what the mayor's probably trying to say is just, we don't have money to do that.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, and times have changed, you know, and some of the reasons we're in the situation we're in is because, you know, some of the funds that we did give out, and, you know, things are a little bit tighter, so unfortunately, you know, your organization is suffering because of it. My—if I could finish—
Sure.
My only suggestion, you know, is—is there other nonprofits that you can collaborate with or partner up with that maybe can help?
Well, there might be. I've been thinking about talking to Mario Carrillo about BBBA again, because they have helped us in the past, now that it's clear to go over there. But I don't really—I have—I don't really know what to do. My problem is mobility. I can't get around and do all of the things that I could do 40 years ago, which would—I would be able to do it, I know. And we're down to—we can exist for about $600 a month. Our budget when we divorced—when the city divorced us was $250,000 a year, so there's a lot of change made, and we still have a function, and I think that's something worthwhile, you know, to—that it can be done for a lot less than it was done, and a lot of the people that don't—aren't helping now that we're helping, don't want to help because they don't have a bottomless pit to dip into to take dollars out of. So I—and, you know, I would—if I had the money, I would pay for it myself.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you so much. Thanks for what you've done also. I have one other speaker, which is Chuck Rabel.
One thought from the last gentleman we spoke is to use community block grant money, and these kids that want to get on a computer, pay the $50 a year dues over at the Boys and Girls Club. They got vehicles now, they can pick people up, and they've got the technology center there. $50 a head a year is pretty damn cheap. Speaking of the Boys and Girls Club, on March 26th, we're celebrating our 50th birthday.
The same age as our city.
We're having a luncheon—I'm sorry.
It's the same age as our city, the Boys and Girls Club.
No, a little bit older, a little bit younger than the city.
Oh, yeah, a few months younger.
Yeah, a couple months. Anyway, we're having a big luncheon. I've got the flyer from you. We're going to honor those folks that helped put it together, the volunteers and the donors, and hopefully some of the folks from the city will be there, and if you want to put together a proclamation, maybe that's the time to do it, to present it there. Just get ahold of Matt. Okay, I've got—
Thanks, Chuck.
One each for you, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Chuck.
Could you go ahead and make one?
Okay.
I just put it on my calendar.
Yeah, I have it on my calendar already, so we're good. Okay, so with that, we don't have any more of those of speakers, of oral communication, so we'll go to remarks. First, we'll start with John's readers. I'll start with Amanda. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report that I did attend the California League of Cities Monthly Meeting yesterday, and it was very informative. It was really nice to get together with some of the other representation throughout the county, and two of the things that were on the agenda that we discussed was a resolution to continue to support our military, which I don't think anybody would not like that. We all support our military, so that was a resolution that we did yesterday, as well as there was a discussion on the California League helping to draft legislation for the state to recognize cities' home rule when it comes to certain issues. So that's something that's in the developmental stages, so we'll keep you apprised on that as it moves forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy—Deputy Mayor Coles.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. I've had a kind of some funny events in the last—since the last meeting. I attended the grand reopening of Hennessy's, which is now the Vista Village Pub. Councilman Aguilera was there, too, and we had a great evening to see what I think is going to be a really nice change of not only the menu, but the atmosphere and everything. So I look forward to spending some time there and really attracting some new restaurant business into that part of town. Yesterday, I had the privilege of accompanying two of the sheriff's volunteers on their route in the morning, Lanny Aerosmith, a former minister of the Methodist Church, and Jerry Black, the parent of one of our honorees, Sergeant Black, earlier. And I didn't—I've known about the sheriff's volunteer program, but I never saw it up close and personal the way I was able to yesterday. I went into the briefing, saw how they set out the day, their agenda, the—they—it's very sophisticated, and they do important work for the city and for the Sheriff's Department. They check on areas of where incidents could occur. They just, you know, make a run through there. They check every reservoir to make sure that Homeland Security has advised them to make sure they're locked up properly. They do what's called YANA, which they contact people who need to hear from somebody on a regular basis, and the best part—the bottom line—is they defer, or they offset probably more than $2 million of staffing and service costs to the Sheriff's Department for our area. So they have 35 volunteers now. They really would like to have more. It's a great opportunity for anybody who might like to—you might like doing that in some of your spare time. Anyway, I—so I enjoyed that, and I would recommend any of you—if you have an opportunity to do that, it's worth it. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Campbell. Nothing tonight. Aguilera, nothing tonight? Well, I spent the part of Wednesday, Thursday, and part of Friday at the Sandag Retreat out at Verona, which was interesting. We heard from the military, and we talked about sequo, which is all very interesting. It's environmental quality stuff, so that was very interesting. And then—but I did have a fun day a week ago on Friday. I got to go with HNS Battalion out at the military, the Marines, and I got to shoot guns with them, so—which I've never shot guns before, so I got to shoot a pistol and rifle that was so heavy that after I shot a few times, they had to help me hold it up because it was very heavy. And they also had like another rifle, and the AK-47, where you lay on your stomach and, you know, just pull the trigger and it shoots, that the military have, so that's very interesting. So anyway, I got to do that. That was one of the more interesting things I got to do last week. So anyway, that was my way. And at the AVO, Life Could Be a Dream opens on Thursday. It runs through March 10th, and it's a doo-wop. It's the—lots of tunes from my era. City offices are closed on Monday, February 18th, and observance of President's Day, and those are my announcements. So city manager, do you have?
Yeah, I just have two, thank you. Wanted to let everybody know that the Buena Creek Trail Extension is moving forward. We got a $1 million grant, and so that'll be taking place just off Veil Terrace at Pringle Terrace Park. A number of eucalyptus trees are going to be needed to be removed as a result of that trail, so we put up signs in advance to let the public know, but we just wanted to make sure everybody knew that there was going to be activity out in that area. We're not cutting trees down just to cut them down, but we are making room for a much-needed trail. And at this time, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to call up Captain Rhodey, who would be introducing our new sheriff's lieutenant, Scott Miller.
Oh.
I think you just introduced him. As you know, we lost Lieutenant Marion just about a month ago to our Border Crime Task Force, and in his place, I'm very happy to tell you that we got Lieutenant Miller. We stole him from the city of Poway, so I will let him tell you a little bit about himself and what he's all about.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Johnson. My name's Scott Miller. I've been on the Sheriff's Department for 30 years, but I started before that as an explorer in 1978, and I actually came to Vista in 1979 as the explorer. So I've explored lieutenant, so I've kind of made the whole trip here. I then got hired and worked at Vista Jail, went to Fallbrook Patrol, and then came back to Vista quite a few times when I was on the SWAT team. So I kind of bounced in and out of Vista. After the SWAT team, I was assigned to a short little detail in Vista and San Marcos and fell in love with narcotics. And so in 1993, I got assigned to Vista Station and—
I'm hoping you'd say that.
Oh, narcotics enforcement, how's that?
Thank you, that's much better.
I came to Vista and San Marcos in '93, and until 2002, worked in and out of Vista, either on the street team or in the narcotic task force. I was lucky enough to get promoted in 2004, and the only place I wanted to work was Vista. So I came here and worked just over a year and a half, and then back to narcotics enforcement, and then promoted to lieutenant, and I started in Santee in 2011, went to Poway, and as soon as Joe got to Vista, it's like, I've got to get back to Vista. My dad and stepmom have lived in Vista since the '70s. I lived in here off and on, either with my dad, or I actually lived on West LA for a while when I was working the jail, at a rental house that my dad owned. So I'm very happy to be back here, I'm very excited to be back here, I just, I love this city, and it's a good place to work.
Good, we're happy to have you back here.
Thank you, and if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions? Don't see any, but welcome back.
Thank you, and it's scooter, sir, not scatter.
Stick around.
Yeah, stick around for a while. Any more, Patrick?
No, I don't.
City attorney, any announcements?
Nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
City clerk, do you have any, no announcements? Okay, with that, we are adjourned, 6:47.